Good morning and welcome to the City Planning Commission Remote Public Meeting. Ryan Singer, who is the Department of City Planning's Senior Director of Land Use and Commission Operations, is now going to outline some general information about the remote public hearing and how to participate.
Thank you. Verbal testimony may be provided online through the NYC Engage Portal or by calling in on your telephone. If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with a dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participation ID and the password is the numeral 1. The phone number is also posted in the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. Please note that whether you're accessing this meeting online or by phone, you must register if you want to speak. Please also note that the testimony will be audio only. The commissioners will hear you but will not be able to see you. When it is your turn to speak, you'll be notified and granted temporary speaking privileges by staff, so please listen closely for your name to be called. If you're accessing the hearing online, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself and you should see a notice on your screen allowing to unmute your microphone. If you're accessing the hearing via phone, your name will be called from a list of registered speakers. Once your name has been called, you will be given the temporary ability to unmute yourself. You do this by pressing star six to unmute your phone. Please note that the muting and unmuting of registered speakers take time, so we thank you for your continued patience. For those accessing the hearing through the online livestream who have not yet registered to speak but decide they wish to do so during the hearing, you must first register to speak through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. It is not possible to testify through the online livestream without first having registered. For those accessing the hearing via phone who have not yet registered to speak but wish to do so, you also must first register to speak through the dial-in participant hotline that I described a moment ago. It's not possible to testify via telephone without first having registered. Please limit your remarks to three minutes and speak clearly into your microphone. There are a few exceptions to the three-minute time limit. Elected officials are accorded the courtesy of jumping to the front of the queue and are not limited to three minutes. If translation services are being used, the time will be extended to five minutes. And if an applicant team with three or more speakers wishes to make a team presentation, the team will generally be allowed a total of 10 minutes. The chair will announce when the time limit is reached, at which point your microphone will be muted. Please be mindful of potential background noise during your testimony. Please make sure that if you're watching the proceedings via livestream, that the livestream is muted when you begin your testimony. Otherwise, you will hear an echo. If you wish to submit written testimony, it should be submitted to the Department of City Planning. Mailing and email addresses can be found on our website, planning.nyc.gov. Lastly, please note that this remote public hearing and all testimony provided is being recorded.
And with that, I would ask the secretary to begin the meeting.
Good morning. This is the City Planning Commission public meeting held remotely through the NYC Engage Portal. Today is Wednesday, December 16, 2020. I will not call the robe. Chair Lago.
Here.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Here.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yeah.
Commissioner Sirulo. Commissioner Sirulo. Commissioner De La Oo. Oh, okay. Commissioner De La Oo.
Here.
Commissioner Dweck.
Here.
Commissioner Edie.
Here.
Commissioner Knight.
Here.
Commissioner Levin.
Here.
Commissioner Marin.
Here.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Here.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Here.
A quorum is present. The first item is the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of Wednesday, December 2, 2020.
On the minutes, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are approved.
Scheduling on calendar numbers 1 through 10, we have resolutions for adoption scheduling Wednesday, January 6, 2021, for a remote public hearing to be held through the NYC Engage Portal.
On the resolutions, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolutions are adopted.
The next part of the calendar is the Report section on page 13. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 11, CD3, N210125RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certain... I'm sorry. For the grant of a certification concerning 330 Gifford Lane for adoption on calendar number 11. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Oo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 11 has been adopted. Borough of Staten Island, calendar number 12, CD3, N210108RCR. In the matter of an application for the grant of a certification concerning 62 Seacrest Avenue for adoption on calendar number 12. Chair Lago.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Knuckles.
Yes.
Commissioner Bernie.
Yes.
Commissioner Capelli.
Yes.
Commissioner Sirulo.
Yes.
Commissioner De La Oo.
Yes.
Commissioner Dweck.
Yes.
Commissioner Edie.
Yes.
Commissioner Knight.
Yes.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes.
Commissioner Marin.
Yes.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Yes.
Commissioner Rampachet.
Yes.
Calendar number 12 has been adopted. The next part of the calendar is the Public Hearing section on page 15. Borough of Queens, calendar number 13, CD7, C21005PCQ. A public hearing in the matter of an application for the site selection and acquisition of property concerning DSNY Queen 7th Parking Lot.
And I would ask, Ryan, if you would want to again repeat the instructions for registering to speak?
If you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online through the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with a dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. If one of the numbers is busy, please try again. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participant ID and the password is the numeral 1.
And with that, I will call the first speaker, who is Andres Delo. And Madam Secretary, I would appreciate your letting each speaker know when they are able to begin.
Thanks. Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, Commissioners. Happy holidays. My name is Andres Delo. And on behalf of Stephanie Prince, our Assistant Director, Jonathan George, who is currently on snow duty but was an integral part of this presentation, and Arlana Davis, our Assistant Commissioner for Real Estate, I'm here to present the Queen 7th District Garage Overflow Parking Lot presentation to you. Next. This application is for a site selection and acquisition of 122-1031st Avenue, located in College Point, for the use, continuing use of overflow parking lot for our Queen 778 garage operation. We have utilized this location since October 2015 under a license agreement with private ownership. Currently, we keep up between 16 and 24 pieces of equipment on the lot at any given time. Next. Here is the zoning map showing a location of the proposed project site. Once again, it's located in College Point in the special College Point zoning is currently zone M2-1. Next. The facility is approximately 134,500 square feet on a 485,000 square foot lot. And we collect refuse at this location for the Community District 7. It's one of the biggest districts in the Borough of Queens. Annex is located next to the garage at 30-19122nd Street. And that houses the broom and equipment for District 7A. The seven garage serves Northern Queens, maintaining also three to four sister agencies in the same area, primarily for the Departments of Park and Recreation and the Department of Environmental Protection. The garage is currently undergoing extensive floor rehab with a targeted date of completion in summer 2022. Personal equipment will be displaced, increasing the need for sanitation sanitation to retain use of the 31st Avenue lot. Next. Here for your viewing is several pictures of equipment that we store on the site. Usually, some of its equipments awaiting decommissioning from the city inventory for auction and also equipment awaiting preventive maintenance and repairs to serve other districts within the Borough of Queens. Next. Sanitation is seeking a site selection acquisition of this lot. And with your approval, it will continue to support the operations of our mechanics and also serve as a holding space for de-casts to do their auctions. With approval of this application, it will ensure that we will continue this operation without disruptions and trucks will not be parked on neighboring streets. DSNY has no plans for any future construction on the project site. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I know I speak for the commission in thanking you for your service in these upcoming intense snowy hours. And with that, I will toss it over to Commissioners who might have questions. Commissioner Rampachet.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just have really one question. What actions will DSNY take to address the comments raised by the Queens BP?
Oh, the Queens BP wanted the commitment that we will not do anything outside the contextual zoning that is slated for that lot. We've committed to doing that. Sanitation commits to obeying all the rules indicated for the zoning. This lot is merely for parking and for equipment waiting repair. We don't have any intentions to do anything outside of that realm.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yes, thank you for that. I think there was also a comment from the Borough President as well as from the community board about street cleaning on College Point Avenue and the areas around the parking lot. Is that something you all can take care of?
We will, we have passed it on to our chief and superiors on the ground and they will try and make a commitment to step up the cleaning and the patrols on that street. But just please be cognizant of the current status of our manpower and budget situations. There were cuts in several areas. And as budgeting is restored, we will do our best to accommodate that request.
Okay, so as long as we know that the request has landed on open ears in sanitation.
Oh, yeah, most definitely.
And then just one other question. I know that this application, apparently the lease that you're applying for here runs only until 2025, which I gather is, what, 10 years from when you started the license use here? But 2025 is a blink of an eye in land use planning circles. Is there any thought of having this space, having the lease extended eventually?
Yes, Commissioner Levin, that is our goal. We hope to renegotiate the terms of this agreement and extend it. This lot is a critical part of our mechanics team in terms of maintaining equipment throughout the Borough of Queens. Just to let you know, we have several slab repairs and projects either in the pipeline are ongoing. So this lot is very crucial to our operations. So we hope to, with the passage of Zuler, we'll be able to negotiate with the landlord. The owner is a very cooperative owner and he's very supportive of our operation.
Okay, so we're looking at this as a long-term arrangement.
We look to, as long as we can stay, of course, with your good graces, we hope to be there for a while while we attempt to repair our much-maligned facilities throughout the Borough of Queens, at which point we can negotiate again and figure out what to do with the lot afterwards.
Okay, good. Thank you for that.
You're welcome.
Seeing no other raised hands, I will thank you, Mr. Delo, and call on our next speaker, Stephanie Prince.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
I'm sorry to interrupt. I have one last question.
Oh, of course, of course.
I'm sorry. Quick question. With regards to these recent budget cuts to sanitation, has this affected this particular department, this maintenance department?
Thankfully, this project of the slab repair was one of the few projects that was ongoing during the pandemic. And that's, we're very thankful for that. Many other projects we had slated have been, has been slated, I mean, haven't shelved. This is one of the few projects that have been ongoing, which is why you see in the presentation that we have a scheduled completion date of 2022.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, and with that, Mr. Delo, you are off the hook. And next up is Stephanie Prince.
Good morning, Commissioners. I was just here, the Assistant Director of Real Estate for Sanitation. I was just signed on to be of support for Andre Delion, our Deputy Director, in the event that there was a dropout in communication. So we so appreciate all of your attention and to this application. We appreciate all the community board's support and the Queens Borough President. So we appreciate you hearing this application.
Thank you. Questions for Ms. Prince? Okay, thank you, Ms. Prince. And now on to George Donahue.
Morning. This is George Donahue, Assistant Director of Leasing for the City. And I'm just here as a standby if there were any questions regard to the ability.
Thank you. I appreciate the department's belt and suspenders approach. This is obviously an important project for the department and for the Department of Sanitation and for the city. And I am, again, looking to see if any Commissioners have comments. And seeing none, I will urge the three of you to get back to work on snow duty. And thank you for your testimony. And if I could ask, Ryan, if there are any additional people who have signed up to speak?
No, Madam Chair. No additional speakers on this item.
Okay, then with that, this hearing is closed.
Borough of Queens, calendar numbers 14 and 15. Calendar number 14, CD1, C190517ZMQ. Calendar number 15, N190518ZRQ. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning 420128 Avenue rezoning.
I'm Chairman of Houston this matter.
Thank you, Commissioner. Our first speaker is Jacqueline Skorinchy.
Good morning, Chair Lago and Commissioners. My name is Jacqueline Skorinchy. On behalf of the applicant, Vlatchek LLC, the owners of the development site for this land use application for 420128th Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. This application involves the block fronts along 28th Avenue between 41st and 43rd Streets and will facilitate the redevelopment of the existing Pico de Venecia restaurant site, which has been within the Astoria community for nearly 50 years, and provide a new mixed-use building as well as bring many existing multifamily residential uses on the blocks, block fronts closer to compliance. Next slide, please. Overall, the surrounding land use context includes mixed-use buildings ranging from two to five stories in height along 28th Avenue. There is already a C42A, R6A residential equivalent mapped just one block to the west and then an R6A as you move further west past the development site on 28th Avenue. The area is well-served by public transportation. Next slide, please. The rezoning area has 400 feet of combined frontage along 28th Avenue. Next slide, sorry. The portion of block 701 within the rezoning area includes Pico de Venecia, the two-story mixed-use building. And then, as you can see there, further west are a five-story, 55-foot-tall building built to a 4.36 FAR and four- and three-story buildings that are all built above the existing 1.25 FAR in the R5 district. Next slide, please. On block 685, to provide context, there is a row of four-attached four-story multifamily residential buildings with FARs ranging from 3.07 to 3.49. Next slide, please. Here are some additional pictures of the block front, 685 four-story buildings. And next slide, please. The applicant is requesting two land use actions, a zoning map amendment from the R5 and R5C12 districts to an R6A and R6A-C12 zoning district, and a zoning text amendment to designate the project area a mandatory inclusionary housing area. Next slide, please. The proposed project will be a mixed-use building with 51 residential dwelling units, including 13 mandatory inclusionary housing units pursuant to option 1 and a new home for Pico de Venecia, 6,920 square foot commercial space at the ground floor level, 66 parking spaces. The building originally was proposed at eight stories, which is permitted under the R6A. But at the community board, the community had concerns about an eight-story building next to the existing five-story building.
Thank you. I'm afraid that the time is up. So at this point, I will open it to the Commissioners for questions. Commissioner Delo.
Hi. If the applicant can speak to some of the concerns that came up at the community board and how the applicant is trying to address those?
Okay, thank you. So at the community board, the owners here have been within the community for over 50 years. So it was a major concern of theirs to meet the needs of the community. And so we had originally proposed an eight-story building and were able to bring the overall building down to six stories and still maintain the overall maximum square footage and number of dwelling units for the building. That was one of their main concerns, given that the building next door is five stories. So now, if you look at the rendering, it actually is in context with the street wall that is there today. And also, there was a request to ensure that MIH option 1 will be used for affordability. The owners are able to comply with that. And finally, to increase the number of family-sized units. This is a smaller project, but we were able to increase the percentage of two-bedroom units and reduce the number of studios for the project.
If I can just ask a follow-up question. So what was the change in the total number of units when it was an eight-story building to a six-story building?
It's actually the same number of units. We have 51 units with 13 MIH units.
Do you mind just giving the breakdown then of studios, ones, twos, and threes?
Sure. If it's helpful, I do have a slide in the appendix that shows what we were able to change the unit distribution from. Or I can just tell you, we have five studios, 23 one-bedrooms, and 23 two-bedrooms.
And so obviously, the number of, I guess, two-bedroom units was reduced or something like that with the change from eight stories to six?
No, we actually were able, we reduced the number of... We originally had 21 studios and brought it down to five studios.
I see. Okay, great. Thanks for that background. I appreciate it.
Commissioner Ortiz.
Hi. As a Queens resident, I'm very familiar with this restaurant and sad that it would close for even a moment because it has some of the best ravioli I've ever had. Thank you for your presentation. I have some questions around the parking. You know, I note that you're providing quite a bit of parking on this site, but you've also noted that the site is very transit-accessible and recognizing the city's interest in supporting more transitorial development. Could you speak to the rationale for that decision?
Sure. And I actually did want to, for the Commissioners, that the owner, Christopher Vlatchek of Pico de Venecia, has signed up to testify. So if there's specific questions related to the restaurant operations, he will gladly respond to those during the public testimony section as well. But specifically related to the rationale for parking, you know, the community had voiced concerns that on the weekends there... The owners have always had valet and attended parking in this location. On the weekends, there can sometimes be a lot of overflow onto the surrounding neighborhood. So it was really important for the owners to have adequate parking to accommodate that additional overflow. So they are proposing 66 parking spaces for that reason.
So those parking spaces, is there a breakdown between what's available for residents versus what will be considered commercial?
Yes. Well, there are 19 required residential spaces and then the remaining will be available for for commercial and then potentially if there's a need within the community for additional spaces.
Okay, great. And I can attest to the issue with valet parking and the challenges and the congestion associated with that. So thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Levin.
Yes, I just wanted to acknowledge the changes that the applicant has agreed to make in the project. I think the six-story building, I mean, I fully agree that it is a much more attractive building and fits in much better with the surrounding areas. Of course, the eight-story building would continue to be as of right. We can't, we don't have the capacity of the commission to require that change. But one change that I think we can require is an amendment of the application to limit the MIH to option 1. Do you plan on filing an amendment to your application to have it be option 1 only? Or how are we going to make that happen? Yes, we can file an amendment to remove option 2. The intent is to comply with MIH option 1. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'm not seeing other questions from the Commission. Thank you, Ms. Skorintchi. And our next speaker will be Christopher Blatchek.
Good morning, Commissioners. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes? Okay, good morning. First of all, Commissioner Ortiz, I'd like to thank you for your support. There's nothing quite like homemade pasta. My name is Christopher Blatchek and my parents, Ezio and Juliana, after having both separately immigrated to New York, opened Pico de Venecia at the corner of Twenty-eighth Avenue and Forty-second Street in Astoria in nineteen seventy-three. Under my family's leadership, what started out as a small neighborhood trattoria soon blossomed into one of the most critically acclaimed restaurants in the city and, as many would say, is synonymous with Astoria, the neighborhood that we grew up in. In normal times, we employed thirty full-time employees, most of whom are local to Astoria and have been with us twenty-plus years. There's even a couple who've been with us since day one. The vast majority of customers we service are longtime regulars. And although these customers continue to be loyal, the restaurant has failed to attract a newer demographic of Astoria residents, which has replaced our longtime regulars, who have since moved away from the city to the suburbs. And success in the restaurant industry has always been difficult, and we've seen too many empty storefronts appear where beloved restaurants once stood because owners were hesitant to change and adapt to the changing market conditions. We feel that the residents of Astoria are vital to our future success and what will ensure our viability for the next fifty years. Astoria is such a part of what makes Pico de Venecia special, as much as our family, our staff, and our product. And as you just heard, our plan is to temporarily relocate the restaurant within the neighborhood while redeveloping our property to bring a mix of new homes, including affordable inclusionary houses above our newly renovated Pico de Venecia. I hope that you found Jackie's presentation complete and compelling. We appreciate the unanimous support we received from our community so far in this land use process and ask of the Commission for its support as well. I'm happy to answer any questions if anyone has.
Well, I don't have a question, but I certainly am hankering for some ravioli after hearing your descriptions and Commissioner Ortiz's.
First, thanks for being here. And I appreciate kind of the brief overview of the history of the restaurant. I guess, two questions. Relocating a restaurant even temporarily is obviously a huge undertaking. And I'm just, you know, wondering how far along that process is and whether or not, you know, what level of service you think you might be able to offer in a temporary situation. And then, you know, I think it's really interesting that you frame this whole project as about, you know, trying to, you know, modernize and kind of be appealing both to existing long-term customers and new ones. And I'm wondering what will be different in the new restaurant, besides it being in a new building?
Sure. Well, to answer the first question, you're right. It's not an easy process. And we have several parameters that are important to us. We want to stay in Astoria. And, you know, parking is important to us. So we're looking for places to park in because a lot of our customers do travel to come to us. But on the flip side, in these times now, there is probably more vacancies than, unfortunately, than maybe in other towns and places that are pretty much turnkey. You know, we're anticipating this project taking two years or so. So it's, although it's, it's, you know, it's a bit of a task, we certainly feel it's worth it, just for our continuity. And as far as how long the process is, we've been, you know, actively looking for, say, about four months now with a local broker. And kind of, unfortunately, we do have a feeling that kind of more properties will be coming available shortly, sadly. But kind of that's where we are in the process. As far as what's going to change, clearly the appearance, but also the concept to some degree, where it's, you know, probably, I mean, we are a classic Italian restaurant. I call it Italian soul food. And it's, people like it, but it's also, I think, the kind of younger demographic that's coming to Astoria now maybe wants something a little more current. And so we're going to try and blend what made us successful and got us to this point with what can appeal and still retain our longtime regulars and what can appeal to the newer demographic in Astoria. Because it's clear that the immediate residents of the neighborhood are vital to our success.
Thank you. Appreciate that. And good luck.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? In your comments, I have to admit to being so struck by the creativity of our city's restaurateurs and how much we benefit from it. We've certainly seen it throughout the Open Restaurants Initiative. So thank you and good luck. Thank you, Mr. Blatchek.
Thank you very much.
And at this point, I would ask Ryan if other speakers have signed up to speak in the course of this hearing?
No, ma'am. I'm sure there's no further speakers on the side of.
Okay, then this public hearing is closed.
Borough of Brooklyn, calendar number sixteen and seventeen. Calendar number sixteen, CD fourteen, C one eight zero four nine six, V M K. Calendar number seventeen, N one eight zero four nine seven, V R K. A public hearing in the matter of applications for zoning map and zoning text amendments concerning sixteen-twenty Courtillou Road rezoning.
There is going to be a team presentation on this item. And Ryan, if I could ask that you get me the name of the team members?
It is in transit. I just sent the email. Sorry.
Apologies. We will. Actually, Ryan, if you could read out the members of the team, and this will be a ten-minute team presentation.
The members are Amanda Ionati, Tony Dole, Richard LaBelle, and Victor Filetti.
Okay. And once you are ready, Madam Secretary, if you could start the clock as they start testifying.
Okay, your time has begun.
Thank you, Chair Lago. Commissioners, Richard LaBelle of Sheldon LaBelle, P.C., for the applicant. Good morning. I'm joined by Tony Dole, who is the owner proprietor of Courtillou Market, which is the supermarket located at the property currently in the lower portion, and Victor Filetti, the project architect. I'll be running through the zoning background of the application. Mr. Dole will speak to the operations and his hopes going forward, and Victor will run through the plans. Next slide. So the sixteen-twenty Courtillou Road rezoning is primarily engaged in the frontage on Courtillou between E Sixteenth and E Seventeenth. And as you can see from the zoning map, this is currently a zone R six A with a commercial overlay. You'll also see that beyond the R six A is an R seven A. In fact, a portion of our property located on E Sixteenth and Courtillou is indeed within the R seven A. And much of the R seven A here was zoned in the Flatbush rezoning in two thousand nine, which both established some of these longstanding, existing, large, non-compliant residential buildings within the R seven A and also expressed with it a desire that there would be additional development, much of which did not occur. And this is really one of the reasons that we feel that this rezoning is merited. Next slide. So the rezoning proposal here would take the current property, which is highlighted in red and currently zoned R six A and R seven A, and would rezone that to an R seven D with a C two-four overlay. And this accomplishes several goals. The first would be to allow for a mixed-use residential building with ground-floor commercial. The ground-floor commercial is important to note for would not only contain the new and enlarged Courtillou Market, but would also, in pairing the C two-four with an R seven D, mandate non-residential uses on the ground floor. So this is an important goal for the local area, for this particular commercial thoroughfare as there are active commercial uses along a Courtillou in this area, and this would guarantee those going forward. Next slide. So important to note here with regards to the selection of an R seven D, you have, first of all, as we said, a commercial thoroughfare. Second, you have the B and the Q subway lines within a block of the property. Courtillou is a wide road. Here you have at least five bus lines. This is really very accessible by transportation. The site itself also, along E Sixteenth Street, is, you know, has great site access, both from the wide street as well as from E Sixteenth, being on the corner. You'll also note the higher-density residential buildings which line Courtillou going backwards to the east of the property. So there is indeed some taller, taller building stock in the area. Important to note is that the building is projected to be a hundred and two feet, as Victor will discuss, and that would only amount to roughly seven feet higher than the underlying R seven A, which exists on a portion and behind the property. Next slide. So here we have the zoning change map, and I would probably end my presentation as we scroll through the map. And you have the R six A with the C two-four in the existing zoning map to the left, and the proposal would change this to an R seven D. Of course, we feel that this is merited, again, given the wide street here, given the guarantee for commercial use going forward, the great access to the site. And typically in Brooklyn, along avenues and major corridors, you know, the Commission and our applications and others has been in the habit of rezoning to R seven D and R eight A and above in certain cases. Next slide. So I think I would just have Tony speak briefly as far as his program is concerned, and then have Victor run through the plans. Tony?
Good morning. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, you hear me? Okay. Good morning, everyone. Hope everyone is healthy and safe. My name is Tony Dollar. Me and my family have been in the neighborhood, running the supermarket as best as we can for the last close to thirty years. And would like to continue doing this, you know, running the supermarket for years to come. So we are basically grocers. I mean, not big-time developers, nor we are hiding behind a mysterious LLC. We are very open about the project. Over the years, we have been approached many times by different developers to sell the property that most likely, you know, maybe they won't have the supermarket or would be a much smaller space, and a good chance they won't do even affordable housing if they cannot reason. So why we are doing this, in general, if supermarket owners doesn't get creative in light of all the competition they're getting from Amazon and other online companies, in addition to all the new regulations that comes almost every year, we will see many supermarkets not able to survive in the coming years. Therefore, what we are doing will not only ensure the survival of the supermarket that currently employs close to thirty employees, some of them are my family, but we will have a larger space and the ability to keep affordable grocery prices and create additional jobs. Not everyone can afford to shop at Whole Foods or buy everything organic for triple the price. On top of that, we would create affordable housing that's very much needed in the neighborhood. So we believe this project provides two important benefits to the neighborhood and the community, a larger, modern supermarket with affordable prices and decent affordable housing one block away from the train station. Me and my family are really truly excited about the opportunity to locate a beautiful mixed-use building with a family-run, modern grocery store in the neighborhood, that we have been there for so long. Thank you, everyone, for giving me the opportunity to speak.
Victor, if you'd like.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Victor Filetti, the project architect. We're here proposing a mixed-use building. It's approximately a hundred and five thousand square feet in total area, including a proposed cellar. There's approximately ninety-five hundred square feet of commercial space proposed on the first floor with seventy-three thousand square feet of residential use above. The current proposal is for a nine-story building with a height of one hundred and two feet, which is within the allowable one hundred and fifteen feet in the R seven D district. The proposal has proposed eighty-five dwelling units with twenty-one MIH units. You can, actually, you can advance the slide to the plans if you can. One more? Thank you. Again, eighty-five dwelling units proposed. The mix is two-bedroom, one-bedrooms, and studios with the majority of one-bedrooms, fifty-two one-bedroom units, which is about sixty-one percent of the total, twenty-six two-bedroom units, which is thirty-one percent, and seven studio apartments at eight percent. There is proposed a rate of fifty percent attended parking for the amount of dwelling units for a total of forty-four off-street parking spaces in the cellar, which will be fully attended, and access from ramp on E Sixteenth Street, along with forty-three bicycle parking spaces in the cellar as well. We propose seven newly-planted trees on site on the street in accordance with the New York City Department of Parks guidelines. All the sidewalks and curbs will be replaced during construction. There will be controlled-flow roof drainage for storm drainage and a new sanitary sewer connection for the building. Thank you.
That concludes the applicant's presentation. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Duex.
Thank you. I noted that you noted the two thousand and nine rezoning done by the department, which was done with significant community input at the time. And I feel that for this site to be up to an R seven D, which would be above the more contextual R seven A in the area, there needs to be some more commitment from the developer for affordable housing than the twenty-one units proposed currently under the application. So if the developer can speak to that and to the other borough president recommendations on the mix of units, family-size units, and I was very happy to note that you are keeping the supermarket, which is, I believe, a community benefit. And if you can speak to one other comment from the borough president about a contribution to the Lieutenant Federico Arvaz's top lot, which is near the site.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Duex. So, you know, I'd start out by saying that we've had a really beneficial community engagement process, which culminated for us in a vote of twenty-four in favor, five against, a community board fourteen. And we felt really positive about what we view to be an overwhelmingly positive vote. We do take seriously the conditions that were suggested, both by the community board and by the borough president. I'd start out by saying that that the two thousand and nine Flatbush rezoning, obviously preceding the two thousand and sixteen zoning for quality and affordability amendments to the resolution, did not contain any requirement in it for mandatory inclusionary housing. So one of the, you know, one of the factors that the community board discussed and that we think was persuasive is that this will indeed codify and create in perpetuity affordable units in an area where, right now, frankly, not many new affordable units are produced. So I think that with regards to the number of family units, we've already discussed that internally. We've already actually taken steps to reduce the number of studios so that we can enlarge some of the existing one-bedrooms into two bedrooms, and by doing that, decrease the density of the site and kind of try to cater to what the community board and the borough president have discussed. The community board did discuss the fact that they wanted the proportionality of the affordable units to be the same as that at the market rate. That, of course, is codified in the affordability text of the zoning resolution. So we obviously will satisfy that pursuant to law. With regards to the density, I think that, you know, one of the challenges here is that the the community board understood that we're offering a package and that keeping a grocery store here not merely a grocery store, but one which is affordably priced, you know, there was testimony to the Community Board where there were local residents who said that this is where they went in order to get, you know, to get reasonably priced food. This is important to them. Tony has been operating the store for over a quarter of a century. So I think that with regards to the unit count and such, we're, we're able to comply. Honestly, with regards to the levels of affordability and more specifically with regards to increasing those levels, I think that's a challenge as it is in most of our applications. I, I note that we will be entering into conversations with the council member here who wanted to see what the Community Board and Borough President discussed. I think it's something that we're amenable to do, but obviously the, you know, the financial issues with making a multi, multi-use building and, and not only enlarging the supermarket, but in it being, being able to keep the prices low there is somewhat of a financial challenge, but we're, we're willing to at least enter into those discussions. And with regards to the upkeep of the tot lot, which is something that was raised at both the Borough President and the Community Board, Tony said to us that, that he's happy to, to, to do that and to contribute. Of course, he'd like to have a viable project. He will have, as he's told me, more flexibility once the shovels go in the ground and once he's actually, you know, able to, to, to ensure that he will get rezoning. Right now, of course, being in Yule, there's no guarantees. But again, all the recommendations that were made are being considered. We're already happy to, to attempt to comply with at least some of them and, and at least move closer to, to complying with others.
Kind of a follow-up question. Will the supermarket be done pursuant to a fresh project from the IDA, which would ensure that it stays in operation for, I believe, twenty-plus years?
Yeah, you know, right now, I think to, to move forward on the application, there was no intention of, of applying for fresh. And I know that when we talked to EDC and discussed certain incentives, part of that is that they want to incentivize, you know, a, a new supermarket. To the extent that they're, that they are somewhat convinced that a supermarket will remain, they're less likely to issue some of those, you know, really beneficial tax abatements and such. So, so I think that it's something that, to the extent that the fresh application would benefit the supermarket in the building, I think it's definitely something that Tony would, you know, would be happy to, to look at. I would just note that, you know, one of the things we've always talked about internally is that he's had this property and he's had this business for so long. It's not an overstatement to say that he's gotten, you know, developers coming in and saying, look, we're happy to, 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 to talk to you about purchasing the property and developing here. This, this is really grounded in a desire to stay in the community and to keep the supermarket. So, so if there are applications which we can make, which will ensure that the supermarket remains and which we are able to take advantage of, I think we are going to explore those. It's just not part of the current application because, again, it was a complicated application and we wanted to get through the process.
I'll, I'll just say, I feel more comfortable if, if I know you're going to make available to yourself the fresh program because that, again, will ensure that this is a facility that is going to be kept in operation for many years for the community.
I understood Commissioner Dweck and, and I think it's something that, that we can definitely discuss with Tony. And, and, you know, for him, it's, it, he, he's, he's so adamant about the supermarket remaining anyway that if there are programs which can be beneficial and which will ensure that the supermarket remains, it, it's something we definitely will explore.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Deloos?
Kind of following up on Commissioner Dweck's questioning and you know, and I, and I hear Mr. Lobel saying that, you know, to kind of, to, to make the numbers work, to expand either the total number of affordable units or to deepen their affordability, that there might need to be some kind of offset because of the total cost of the project and, and the fact that there's a desire to expand and the supermarket and keep it affordable. So now there's obviously then a, a potential relationship between the tax abatement through fresh that, that Commissioner Dweck is talking about and the possibility of either expanding the number of affordable units or deepening their affordability. So I guess I'm, you know, chalk, put me down as someone who also believes it would be valuable to explore that for, for a number of reasons.
I hear you, Commissioner Deloos, and, and, and I think, frankly, I think it's a wonderful option. And, and it's something that I think we definitely want to look into. Again, it sounds to be beneficial to, to the, the project, the, the, you know, the applicant, the area. I think it's just something that we wanted to kind of secure our, our potential rezoning and then, and then see what else is available. But again, I, I would, I would just say that we, we are not, you know, we're not adverse to that. We, it's, I think it's something that would work out great and we're happy to look at it.
Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you, Chair. I just have one comment about the building design. And I'm fine with it for the first eight floors. But when you get to the ninth floor, I mean, typically, when you get to that penthouse level, you're trying to sort of minimize the height and you're, you're setting back and trying to stay within the envelope. But this design seems to make the penthouse look even bigger than it really is. And I just wonder whether you might reconsider that massing and have the penthouse be a more restrained top floor rather than having it to be quite as prominent as it is now.
Yes, Commissioner Bernie, I, I would probably defer briefly to Victor on this. I know, obviously, we're still in the planning phases and have demonstrated illustrative designs. But I would note that, that Victor and Tony have been working on and have already produced alternative, alternate, alternative massings. And Victor, I mean, can you hold a minute?
Sure. We, we have looked at possibly setting back some of those, what you can look at as dormers up at the top at the ninth floor. They are, they are set back in, in creating terraces for each of the apartments. But we have been looking at making some of them a little bit smaller and possibly setting them back in from the main street wall as well.
Oh, sounds terrific. I'd be interested to see them.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Commissioner Levin?
Yes, thank you. I have two questions for Mr. Dola relating to the development process. And that is whether you intend to partner with a developer to complete this project? And secondly, what the plan is for the supermarket during construction? We've received, as I'm sure you're aware, quite a bit of written testimony from folks in the immediately surrounding neighborhood who are really concerned about losing the supermarket during the construction period. And there's been some reference to the notion of doing this in phases. Is that a part of your plan?
Yes, I mean, do you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, we, we're looking at, at doing this in phases as much as we can because, believe me, I don't want to see that supermarket closed for one day. So this is really something we are exploring. And also, I'm, I'm, you know, I, I, I'm not partnering exactly with developers, but I'm getting an advice from, from, from good developers who have a lot of experience with affordable housing and, and that type of development. So it is, we, we are looking at, at, at doing this in phases and doing, and, and, you know, with the help of, of developers who have experience, but not necessarily partnering.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And I guess I have a question for the, the team. I don't know if it's for Mr. Dola or for Mr. Lobel. We have received quite a bit of written testimony on this one from the immediately surrounding neighbors. They seem pretty well organized in opposition to the scale of this project, but very defensive and supportive of the supermarket. And I'm kind of, it's unusual that we get a situation where, and I expect that we may hear some testimony later this morning from some of those neighbors. So I'm wondering, it's unusual that we get a situation where the Community Board is as supportive as it is of a project, but the immediate neighbors seem pretty united in opposition. I'm wondering if there's, you know, since this is your last chance to speak on this, if there's anything you would like to say to the commission in response to that pretty focused neighborhood opposition?
Thank you, Commissioner Levin, for this opportunity. You know, we had a very long and, and very active Community Board hearing on this matter. And was opposition, and I'm sure they will speak, and I know that they've made submissions. And I think at the end of the day, there's kind of two camps here. There's the camp where people have said, we don't like that this building will be masked on, like this on Cortellou. And there's, there's frankly neighboring residential owners who have buildings that are, are seven stories, who are looking at a building which, as of right, could go at least in a portion to seven stories. And if not, could go to, you know, seven, six and a half stories under the R six A. And so, you know, they, they've been faced with a position where they, they have a, there's a local community-used grocery store there and, and no building. And so I think that, you know, it's frankly, like, that, that's, you know, they have an interest there, which is that they do not necessarily want to see any building on that area, particularly if you're neighboring residential building, and particularly if you don't want to see that massing on Cortellou. The Community Board, however, looked at this and they looked at everything about it. And they said, we've got, first of all, we don't have a developer coming in. And most of our applications, frankly, are with some developer who acquires a property and, and, and brings an application. That's not the case here. We've got a local owner who's been here for twenty-six years. We have someone who has employed, you know, dozens of people, if not more, in the local area at his grocery store. We have someone who, frankly, local residents who financially are not, you know, are not that well off, saying that they've come to this supermarket for years and that they have benefited from the supermarket for years and that they're willing to listen to this application. And so all those factors together, together with the fact that there was an actual real understanding at the Community Board that they wanted affordability, that they wanted to create these affordable units, that Community Board fourteen doesn't necessarily in this area get those applications. And so you have a situation where you're bringing residential units online in a, in a, in a, in an area where housing pressure is, is ever increasing. You have, you, you know, you have a lack of affordable units. You're on a major thoroughfare, which is near transportation, and you're, you're zoned R six A. And so it's, it's an opportunity. And I think that's what the local area found. And I understand, and I understand all the points that were made by the opposition. And I understand, you know, many of them are saying, well, you know, the, the subway here, the platform is packed and you're bringing in more people to, that's going to exacerbate the situation. And frankly, what we've talked about and what the Community Board asked of us is if we could partner with them, if we could basically work with them and approach the MTA and say, can you look at this, at this subway platform? And can we do work on this? And can you look to the tot lot, the local tot lot, and can you contribute to that? So, so as between an, an opposition which is saying, we don't want anything additional here versus, versus a Community Board which has said, we want you to stay and we want you as a partner, we're picking that option. So again, I, I know that you've received opposition. I know it will come in. But the best we can tell you is that something's going to happen on this, on this development site and we want to be involved in that going forward.
Thank you. I'm checking to see if there are any other commissioners with raised hands. And not seeing any, I will thank the development team. We'll now continue with the public hearing, following our standard procedure, which will be five speakers in opposition, followed by five speakers in support. And we will go back and forth until the speaker list has been run through. Our first speaker is Mary Lutz. Mary Lutz?
Yes. Are, am I able to be heard?
Yes, please begin. Thank you.
Thank you so much for allowing me to testify today. My name is Dr. Mary Lutz. I'm a researcher, professor emeritus, and a resident of the Community District fourteen for thirty-eight years. I hold my doctorate and master's in public health and epidemiology from Columbia University. I'd like to make a comment first about the possibility and what I think should be considered with regard to the fresh application. I recently observed a consequence of upzoning in Manhattan, near Manhattan, near Metropolitan Hospital. The Dollar Tree ninety-nine cent store near one hundred and third street has become the local grocery for frozen canned and packaged foods and beverages for the First Avenue residents there. No fresh fruit, no vegetables. I wonder, is this what we can expect? Now, with regard to some of the specifics of my written testimony, I'm only going to read the highlights. The, with regard to the transportation and construction, I refer to Technical Manual, Chapter sixteen. The existing public transportation corridor provided by Cortellou Road between Coney Island Avenue and Nostrom Avenue provides not only commuter subway travel, but also several vital commuter express buses to Manhattan and back and a well-used cross-Brooklyn bus system. These include the B one oh three and the BM one, BM two, BM three and BM four bus expresses to Manhattan that originate in Sheepshead Bay, Canarsie, Coney Island and Garrison Beach. What has been neglected in the developer's application is that buses, these buses provide the only ADA handicap accessible transportation in central Brooklyn. Moreover, most subway stations, including the Q stop at Cortellou Road, Beverly Road, Church Avenue and Newkirk, those are the nearest stops, are not currently stations that include and are equipped with elevators. Regarding construction, this is from the Technical Manual, Chapter twenty-two. The quote, "wide commercial corridor," unquote, mentioned in the developer's application is in fact a two-lane roadway with legal parking on both sides. There's currently no room for buses to pass a double-part car, much less for fire engines or other emergency vehicles to proceed. With regard to air quality and public health, Chapter seventeen and Chapters twenty of the CEQR Technical Manual. In Brooklyn, county-wide pediatric hospitalizations for asthma, the leading cause of patient-inpatient hospitalization are the highest in New York State at five point four five per one thousand. That's Brooklyn. In zip code one one two two six, where the proposed upzoning is located, that rate is seven point oh one per thousand. The proposed project is directly across the street from approximately a hundred residences with elementary-age children.
Thank you, thank you. Ms. Lutz, at this point, we'll turn it over to the commissioners for questioning. Any questions from the commission? Thank you for your testimony and also for your written testimony. Our next speaker will be Kai Peterson. Okay, we appear to have lost that connection. And so we will turn to Kara Metcalfe. Oh.
Mr. Peterson?
Sorry, there's a double unmute process. You get two notices. All right. I, I'm speaking in opposition to the application as presently submitted. I think, I think we've all heard in Council Lobel and the applicant and how they are speaking to present recommendations that they are speaking from the places as strong community members. And it's disappointing that they're not willing to make any written commitments at this time for things as their grocery program and looking at things like the, the fresh application or even just a baseline commitment to the minimum provisions for M I H option one, affordable housing in their application. Everything is just, we'll consider it until you give us a unilateral approval for an upzoning to R seven D. I think one thing that is, is interesting and very worthwhile considering in Borough President Adams' recommendations are to, with the granting of the FAR that they're requesting, but at a much restrained height limitation, you can easily build a more contextual building that constrains the, the floors to below the eighty-five-foot threshold by limiting the, the podium level, the groceries floor level to be more in context with the adjoining structures. And also similarly for the residential floors, you could get the full area at a lower building more in line with the R seven A zoning that's immediately to the south. Although noting that all of those R seven A buildings are largely cooperatives and rentals, and many of those rentals with stabilized units, and they will not change. So referring this project as an R seven D in relation to an R seven A zoning is not really- So referring this project as an R 7D in relation to an R 7A zoning is not really accurate to what the neighborhood character is and how it will remain going forward, south of Cortellou Road. The other point I would like to make, and I hope the commission presses on and asks for modifications before, before even beginning to consider this application, is CB 14 has some good recommendations in terms of expanding the shadow study in relation to the actual proposed building, not just the broad upzoning of R 7D as a whole. This building poses a significant impact to the street front character along Cortellou Road and the outdoor dining that the community makes great use of this as you know, COVID times. And then similarly, you know, Borough President Adams makes reference to sustainability and benefits on energy reductions citywide. And there are neighboring buildings that are looking to take advantage of solar power initiatives that this project threatens. And so if they should have the right to, to build and benefit from this property, they shouldn't preclude other buildings to, you know, improve their standing in the city and help the city reduce their energy use.
Thank you, Peterson. At this point, I'll ask if there are questions from the commission. Thank you for your testimony, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Our next speaker will be Cara Metcalf Oshinsky.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. Yes, my name is Cara Metcalf and I am a local resident. I'm a longstanding resident of this community. And as this recently was brought to my attention, that this is what's occurring. My neighbors and I have many concerns, especially concerning the layoffs that would be involved with this type of construction, especially in regards to what we've heard would be at least 100 layoffs of not only supermarket employees, but of employees of, you know, neighboring businesses. And part of what keeps Cortellou such, you know, a thriving and, you know, wonderful, you know, part of our neighborhood is the amount of small businesses that are able to run successfully. And not only that, but on the street, the Kefird really is the only supermarket that is, you know, affordably priced, especially for, you know, elderly residents that are only live in walking distance from the area. And my concern is, you know, A, with the time span of this project, you know, the amount of time with no commitment for maintaining that affordability and also with no commitments from the developers to, you know, maintain some kind of accessibility to the supermarket during the construction, especially in times of pandemic, just the, the idea of these layoffs and the idea that residents, you know, will then potentially have to either spend money that we don't have or travel in times of a pandemic to access more affordable groceries just seems like not just poor timing, but really not considering the needs of the community that they're planning to develop in. And as the previous speaker said, I am also, you know, very concerned with the lack of assurances in regards to affordability and also affordable housing units within the building, especially since it is such a low amount of, you know, quote unquote affordable units and also assurances of what level of income that those affordable housing units will, will accommodate. And I am also very concerned and my neighbors and I are very concerned about the threats to the solar initiatives in the area that are looking to alleviate energy costs for such local businesses. And there is also no commitment from the developers to incorporate, you know, environmentally friendly, you know, usages within the new developed buildings. So again, we have, we have many concerns and we feel that this would be a great detriment to our neighborhood. It would limit access to, you know, essential goods and will potentially hurt most of the residents of this area, especially in a time where we really need access to affordable groceries and, and affordable road, and well, you know, and easy access to roadways. And yeah, this is a great concern. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission. Commissioner Velloz.
I'm just, you know, obviously this is the second speaker that's raised the issue of solar and the fact that this building may, may impact on other adjacent buildings' ability to generate energy. You know, one thing, I, I don't know, Ms. Metcalf, if you have any information related to this. But no, obviously there's, there's a new local law that, that requires either green roofs or solar or wind power as part of new construction. So this building would be subject to that. So in what a, a solution, the potential solution might be a community shared solar approach where this owner could literally share the benefits of, of solar with, with neighbors. So are you aware of, were not, those conversations have been broached at all?
I am not personally aware of the extent to which those conversations have happened. What I did know is that there was an adjacent solar initiative that would be like that the efficiency of which would be blocked by just the construction of this development. And also my, my main concern is that since, you know, this is not, this doesn't seem to be a core concern of how the building will be constructed. And, but if there is that sort of, you know, community based initiative to share the benefits of, you know, the solar initiative within the new development, that definitely would be a benefit to the community if that is a commitment that, you know, they are willing to make.
Well, I guess we'll, we'll hopefully hear back on that point later. Thank you.
Yeah.
Questions? Thank you for your testimony, Ms. Metcalf. Our next, our next speaker will be Harry Budins.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I am also speaking in opposition to this upzoning. And I'm also standing in solidarity with the citywide coalition calling today from the steps of City Hall for a moratorium on all these top down U-Lerp applications that are driven by the real estate industry in the middle of a raging pandemic as inimical to democracy and real and informed public participation. This is not just one site, but the entire block between East 16th and 17th Streets. And the environmental assessment and flimsy rendering does not accurately reflect the anticipated demolition and luxury development on all of the lots being considered today. The commissioners mentioned and should look at this proposal in the context of the enormous amount of time and effort that was put into the comprehensive 2009 Flatbush rezoning. If approved, this precedent would eviscerate all of that community input and open the floodgates to real estate interests to pursue more spot upzonings on dozens of lots of Cortellou Road that could transform this eclectic and diverse commercial strip with vibrant sidewalk and street dining and barbershops and crafts and shopping into a desolate canyon of shadows and of cookie cutter chain stores indistinguishable from other parts of the city. R 7A may seem reasonable to some of you, but the seven blocks of Cortellou Road from East 17th to Coney Island Avenue were specifically rezoned to R six A to maintain the height and scale and density that has successfully fostered vital economic and housing activity. Please don't join other interested parties to presume to know better than the many community members that sacrificed their time and energy to participate in the process that culminated in 2009 and jeopardized the Cortellou Road success story. The developer can already build all the so-called affordable housing they want. If all these proposals from Gowanus to Flatbush were really about housing and not more profits, we would also see more advocacy for an end to evictions, public investment in NITSHA, the transformation of empty office space into residential uses and the redistribution or taxing of vacant luxury units that are wasting away in our city. Since the Flatbush rezoning, there have been over 200 new building permits filed in community board, board 14, 92 of them since 2016. 200 demolition permits have been filed in that time, showing plenty of activity. Even the sad demolition of a hundred plus year old church at 1921 Cortellou Road on Ocean Avenue has yielded a development with 100% affordable units, while here is proposed a bare minimum. This proposal seems to be about money and personal profit at the expense of the community and expanding real estate holdings. The applicant has paid for lobbyists since 2016, but cannot host an open community forum or town hall in all those years about this private development. No changes have been made in contrast to the Astoria Restaurant example today, where the building was cut down from eight to six stories without sacrificing any unit.
Thank you, Mr. Budin, for your testimony. The time is up, but I will turn it over to commissioners who might have questions. Thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Kay Esterman. Kay Esterman? We will return to Ms. Esterman and move on to Megan DeMarcus. Brian, would you be able to check?
DeMarcus should have the ability to speak.
Hi, that unmute button just popped up. Thanks so much for letting me speak. I'm the parent coordinator at PS 139 Brooklyn, which is the school that serves the, the same community where this development is proposed. One point I would like to make is the, the developer has mentioned several times how community board 14 carefully reviewed and considered public opinion and community support before approving. I would just like go on the record to say that that's not the case. For the three years that this application was put forward to the community board, pre-pandemic, there were speakers in opposition, lines out the door to speak in opposition to this project. And there was significant outreach by CB 14 to include community members in the process. It was only approved when that outreach stopped. And of course, there was less opposition from the public to this, to this application. I would also like to just go on the record as saying that Tony Dola doesn't live in our community. He doesn't represent community interests. He's never, in, in the past, at least five years, been on the block or been on site at the grocery store. And he's been positioned as somebody who has vested interest in the community, who lives in the community, he lives in Staten Island. I will say that we are not opposed to development. I personally helped to raise over $1.5 million to rehab our schoolyard from local politicians and through participatory budgeting. We are definitely pro-community improvement. Our community is not a community of young upwardly mobile people and hipsters, though the Victorian homes and the bars and restaurants may portray it that way. Our school is a Title I community, is a Title I school, which means 70% or more of the students and families in that school are at or below the poverty line. I'd like to go on record as saying that if this development were to go forward, we hope that the upzoning doesn't go forward, but the development goes forward, we were not looking for affordable housing. We need low income housing to serve the community, to serve the families within our community who are mostly doubled up and tripled up and living in studios all around. We need to serve these families. In addition, the school serves as a community hub. We have ESL classes, we have HSE programming, we do food distribution. We do a lot of things that schools aren't necessarily intended to do, but community centers are. So if this development were to go forward, I would say we need to have a youth center, a community center that serves our population. In our school, there are over 30 different languages spoken. Outreach about this project has not been conducted in any of the other languages represented within our community except for English. And I think that's something that should be, should be addressed. So just in, in summation, not anti-development, but pro-development that supports the community that lives here. This is a low income community. We need low income housing and we need community centers that serve young people and that serve community members with services. And that's, that's my time. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Mark, both for your testimony and for your work on behalf of the schools. Questions from the commission? Well, again, thank you for your testimony. Our next speaker will be Sean Campbell.
Good morning, commissioners and members of the public. I, I really meant to be on this to answer any questions that you might have about the community board and its process. So if I'll just speak for a moment to, to that. You know, we are a 50 member board. Each member of the board has his or her own distinct point of view. And so to present the consensus in the form of the recommendation that came to the commission sort of runs the risk of distilling out the many concerns, questions and, and variety of opinions that each board member expressed in the vetting of this proposal. Each board member is, after all, a member of the community. So I want to push back most respectfully and gently on both Mr. Lobel and Commissioner Levin's concern about the community board not representing the point of view of the number 16 or more conditions is an unprecedented number of conditions for this board. And each one of those conditions is a voice heard and a point of view espoused by, by a member of our board. And those commissions were, many of them enveloped in the borough president's recommendations and have been raised here today. And I just want to remind everyone that a recommendation to approve with the conditions means that every one of those conditions must be met, the approval to be an approval. And without that, that the approval isn't, isn't such. The question of solar energy did come up and one of the conditions is that the, this building cannot negatively impact the solar revenue of the adjoining neighbors. So that's just one example of many, but I do want to assert again that this is a board that listened closely and, and that had their own, as members of the community, shared community concerns. And I thank you for this time and for your thoughtfulness in this, in this application.
Thank you for your testimony and also for your service on the community board. The input of community boards is invaluable to the work of the commission.
Thank you.
Questions from the commission? Commissioner Levin?
Yes, Ms. Campbell, thank you for being here and clarifying things. I want to assure you that we fully understand the importance of conditions. Before being on the planning commission, I spent eight years chairing the land use committee of my own community board. I've written plenty of these recommendations and don't, in my previous comments, didn't want to diminish to any extent the conditions that you laid out for us. But I have one question for you, which is I was struck by reading the community board's conditions that there seemed to be no mention of the scale of the requested R 7D zoning, the size of the building, which seems to be one of the fundamental concerns that we're hearing expressed from some of the community members who are in opposition. There seems to be a feeling that this building is just too big and I have my own serious doubts about the appropriateness of the R 7D designation there. So I wonder if you could elaborate a little bit on where the community board came out or the fact that, I mean, your letter does suggest some setbacks, but doesn't really say anything directly about the size of the building overall. Am I a misunderstanding?
No, I, I, I do think that there, that there had, there were certainly conversations about that to, I can't recall all of the details of them. I think that the setbacks were one of the ways in which the board dealt with that concern. And I think too that, I, I think Mr. Lobel sort of alluded to this. I think the community board looked at the project and compared not what is there now to what would be there should this application move forward, but what the as of right would look at like compared to, to the application. And so I think maybe the bulk conversation got lost in that. And if I could just put in a quick plug for all community boards across the, we are in the process of having a conversation, many, many of my colleagues and I, about the level of depth of understanding and expertise that board members across the city have in terms of land use and a need, you know, to, to broaden or deepen that level of expertise. So some of that may have been lost in the fact that of our 50 board members, we have one who is a land use attorney out in Long Island. We have no architects. We don't have a land use committee. And so I, it may be some of that, and then we rely on our recommendations going up the, up through the process to higher levels of expertise to be honed in on. And I think the Borough President's Office did do that and address that more completely.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. And I certainly appreciate the challenges of folks out in communities getting, you know, learning up on, on how to grapple with these kinds of developments as they, as they come to you. It's, it's hard work. I fully appreciate it and I'm glad you're out there doing it.
Thank you. Thank, thank you all.
Any other questions from the commission? Then thank you, Ms. Campbell. Our next speaker will be Phoebe Lessie.
Ms. Lessie, you should be able to unmute your mic, your mic.
We can return to Ms. Lessie?
Sure.
And move on to Shirley Alexis? Maybe Alexis Shirley?
Hi.
Oh, that's, that's Ms. Lessie.
I'm from PS 139 and I'm the student of my teacher, Ms. Rivera. I would just like to say something about the luxury building that they're gonna put up by, um, on the Key Foods. So one thing that I want to say is that I live a block away from Key Foods. And what it feels to me inside a little bit is that it feels like a huge home inside because I get food from there and I get my medication from that neighborhood and just making it, just seeing it break down and putting up a luxury building is just heartbreaking because now they're gonna put up this luxury building and the food prices are gonna be higher and homeless people are not gonna be able to afford any food and stuff. And also, nobody is gonna even think about the luxury building because it's a really high rent. And it's just not fair for the people in this neighborhood because they won't be able to afford the luxury building in this neighborhood. And it's gonna close down for two years and the train station is gonna be more full. And people who work won't be able to go to work because some of them don't have cars and they need to go on the buses and the trains to get to work. So just seeing it break down is really sad because because people live around there and they need their food and stuff. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Lessie, for taking time from your schooling to testify. Questions from the commission?
Thank you for being here. And testifying.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, back to the books. Um, our next speaker will be Shirley Alexis.
We don't have Ms. Alexis in the room right now.
Okay.
We've reached out, but haven't seen her.
Then we will check to see if Kay Esterman has returned to the room.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
I am a parent of a student at the local school, PS 139, where Mr. Marcus is the parent coordinator. And I don't want to repeat what a lot of people have already said. So I would just like to point out that as you have heard from, from one of the other students and as my daughter was just saying to me while she was listening, she, they don't understand why this building would happen because they don't think it's what's best for the families. They don't think it's what's best for the school. They don't think it's what's, what's best for the neighborhood. And at their school, they have a motto. And that motto is to be your best self, to do your best work and to be a team player. And it sounds like we cannot count on these builders to do that. And we can't count on them to set a good example for the kids at the local school or to be good neighbors. That's all.
Thank you, and thank you for sharing the school's model, what fabulous rules to live by. Questions from the and thank you very much, Ms. Esterman. Our next speaker will be Hollis, I'm sorry, Holly Ellis Spiegel.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, I am also a parent from PS 139. I greatly appreciate what all the other parents and especially the students have said. And I echo their concerns that any development that is done in the neighborhood benefit the neighborhood as it exists, but doesn't attempt to change the neighborhood into something that it is not. Our neighborhood is a place where people of several different kinds of income levels can participate in their community with equity. And we need to continue to deepen those ties within our community, not put up buildings that divide us. So if a new development is passed, we ask as members of the community that it include opportunities for all members of the community, a community center, a place for healthy food, a place for children to play and low-income housing that enables all members of our community to live in that building, but not be excluded by it. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions from the commission? Thank you, Ms. Ellis Spiegel. Our next speaker will be John Oros.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much, and thank you to everybody who spoke and given testimony. Again, I'm speaking out in opposition to this upzoning in 16, for 1620 Cortely Road. And I don't want to be repetitive of all my neighbors who have shared a lot of concerns. I think the bottom line is that this upzoning is unnecessary, not contextual, and would set a dangerous precedent for our neighborhood. And I strongly just advocate that the CPC reject this application so that it can go back to the Community Board. And a lot of these well-thought-out recommendations and provisions be included in the actual application. As I think another neighbor pointed out, there's been a rather deferential, I would say, response from the developer builder and his attorney saying, we could consider these, we could consider these. So I would, I would much prefer, especially given what our Community Board Leader Sean just mentioned about there not being as much of a, of a land use expert on the Community Board at the time that this was pushed through, would just like to see this get restarted because it's, it's clear that there's a lot of outstanding issues. And I don't know if we can necessarily trust the developer at his words. And I think we just need to be clear that it's great, Mr. Dolly's a local businessman. He wants to work with the community, but the motivation here is really, really profit in order to build a really high building. And I would like to, you know, without sounding a little hyperbolic, I would like to quote from the Borough President's recommendation because I find that the recommendation that the Borough President put out is a little bit like the Mueller report, you know, like he's not gonna outright reject what was said. But there's a lot of clues here that I think point to the fact that this is not, not a necessary upzoning. Borough President, to quote, Borough President Adams does not agree that the applicant's assertion that an R7D district is necessary to realize a larger supermarket and affordable housing units. He goes on to say that an R7A MIH district provides a small increase in market floor over R6A based on MIH option one. And an R7D represents a significant jump with a 4.2 use of FAR. So the bottom line here is that not only did, is this upzoning going above what R6A is, it's going one step further to R7D. And I don't understand the rationale at all for an R7D to be approved because it represents such a big jump that would be not contextual. There's been a lot of mischaracterizations that I think have come forward. First of all, this assertion from the, the attorney that it's only a modest seven-foot difference when you're actually comparing to co-op buildings that have been, been around for decades that are not on Cortely Road, but on the smaller, more residential roads. And then also comparing it to an imagined height that would assume that the MIH option is assumed, is taken because that, that comparison to 95 feet or whatever is only if other qualifying conditions are met. So there really is a gross mischaracterization of how tall this building would be in context. That's my time.
Thank you, Mr. Oros. Questions from the commission? Thank you for testifying. Our next speaker will be Kenya Handy Hilliard.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Good morning. Thank you, City Planning, for this opportunity to speak. My name is Kenya Handy Hilliard and I stand firmly in opposition to the current upzoning application of 1620 Cortely Road as it is in its current form. And I stand in solidarity with those at City Hall protesting against the boom in upzonings across the city. I do not consider this your regular NIMBY fight. This is a cry from the community who has witnessed the carnage of ZQA and MIH-based development in other areas around the city. The developer wants to upzone to maximize their as-of-right property and make as much money as they can. They are trying to leverage our air rights and skyline while providing few guaranteed benefits or protections to the community in return. And as we know, Dittmas Park, along with the rest of the city, is in the midst of an affordability crisis. According to the New York City Comptroller, pre-COVID, the cost of living outpaced wages two to one. COVID has exacerbated these disparities as the city has seen massive job loss, small business closure, a steep rise in food insecurity homelessness, and even apartment vacancies. We're all in crisis mode. Our community is not stable enough to receive business as usual, let alone another major luxury development project that will surely become the first domino to fall for a non-contextual development in the area. While I applaud the Borough President's recommendations, of course, they do not go far enough, like including a more nuanced approach to affordable housing outside of the standard ZQA/MIH metrics. The developers should be legally liable for making greater investments in the local schools, sewage and corridor maintenance, and providing more protections for small business sustainability and more. And I haven't heard any consideration for the use of union contracting, which creates long-term jobs and transferable skills that go beyond this one project organically from the community. Therefore, I'm asking you to vote down this application for greater negotiation with the community at large and more guarantees that justify our community's sacrifice of air rights, skyline, laundromat, and potentially supermarket, which are ever more essential now and in a post-COVID world. Thank you.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission? Thank you, Ms. Handy Hilliard. Our next speaker will be Maysam Tahir, or Tahir. Apologies if I'm mispronouncing the name, Maysam Tahir.
Mason, Mason has the ability to unmute. So we've invited her to do so. We can reach out and see if there's an alternative way to get her in the room.
Okay, then we will move on to Aaron Lutz-Kanoy.
That person does not appear to be in the room.
Okay, Sarah Alwa.
Also not in the room.
Gabriel Alter?
Yes, you've unmuted.
Uh, hello, good morning. Hi, I'm reading a letter on behalf of the Board President of 400 E17th Street Co-op, Timothy Sudwicks, who is an architect. He writes, Dear Commissioners, we oppose the project at 1620 Cortely Road in its current form. This project's massing and plans as shown in the ES are not accurate. Bulkhead is missing, dead-end corridors at plus 80 feet, and site plan has inaccuracies with regard to distance to our building that mean, means window-to-window distances of 40 feet, not complying with ZR 23711. The massing at the rear will have small lot line windows, 10% facade, and added costs for requiring, required opening protectives per building bulletin 2015 to 17. The massing is presented as speculative, so where will non-conforming bulk be relocated to max out the FAR? The proposed zoning R7D has a height limit of 115 feet, so approval of the upzoning could lead to an even higher building than presented without carefully crafted stipulations. Our residents, many of whom are minorities and first-time buyers, at the rear of the building will lose all views as we would with an as-of-right development, but with a potential new height and bulkhead will also lose light. Lastly, we are seeking to increase our energy efficiency with the solar panel array. Solar panels or green roof would be required for roof replacement under BB 2019 010. The upzoning has the potential to partly overshadow our roof. This creates a major conflict if we are also required to add solar. It may affect our grade letter, Local Law 95 2019. With reducing emissions allowances, will we incur fines in the future? Some items we would like to see, it would be preferable if the building used 15 feet for the ground floor retail, which is in line with a residential double switchback stair instead of 20 feet, and nine-feet-eight-inch floor-to-floor instead of 10 feet for residential floors. Parapets should be glassed. The elevator could be MRL instead of traction to reduce the bulkhead. But this only gets us so far. Ideally, we believe the massing should be reduced at least a floor below 75 feet at the western edge to be contextual. If even a limited upzoning is approved, it should be in the form of a series of step terraces created to a peak on the east where the core slash bulkhead should be moved. If the developer picks up the eastern lots now or in the future, this would allow a central core, which is more efficient. We believe that a step massing, if articulated well, will allow for a breakdown of the street wall, more in keeping with context. Please note, the Brooklyn Borough President report seems to have a typo on page eight, paragraph two, when it suggests moving the bulk to the corner of E16th Street. This is the opposite of where the bulk should be moved to reduce overshadow from our studies. Simply put, the above is our intuition for a more intelligent response to the development context. And we believe better massing would allow for each 400 E17th to have some access to light, proceed with the solar array, and the developer to increase their return with valuable private building community terrace mix and not compromise the number of affordable housing units. We look forward to seeing a viable proposal and massing that addresses the concerns of residents of 400 E17th Co-op and that of the community at large. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And would very much appreciate your submitting the record, the letter for the record. Commissioner, the
Thank you.
Hi, well, two, two things. One is, yes, please do submit the letter for the record. And I, you know, I think you bring up, the Co-op brings up a number of detailed concerns, which would be helpful to hear the applicant's response to in a, in a review session. Um, I will just say, whoever wrote that letter is an ideal candidate for the Community Board Land Use Committee. And so perhaps some recruitment can go on as part of this CPC hearing. So thanks for participating.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Alter. Our next speaker will be Laura Stokitis.
Laura Stokitis is not in the room.
Okay. Um, Ilana Reinholdts. And Ryan, do you want to explain the pilot undertaking now?
Sure, Ms. Reinholdts had given us a, an image to display while she gave her testimony. And so we're gonna get that up. There we go. Ms. Reinholdts?
Thank you very much. That's also my timer, so I will, I will try my best. Thank you. Okay, hi, I'm Ilana. I'm from, oh, can you hear me, actually?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'm from Save Cortely, a group that started advocating for community-first and consensus-based thoughtful development based on the outcome of our Community Board meeting eight weeks ago. We are a grassroots group of 250 working parents, social workers, teachers, senior citizens, college students, urban planners, small business, and stay-at-home parents. We are not against this building. We are against this upzoning and the application as it is presented. To provide some color on the Community Board meeting, I've re-watched the YouTube video on my Friday night and took some notes for you guys. During the Community Board vote, Chairman Powell, Ed Powell, did not even understand the procedural difference between the approval with conditions or the disapproval with conditions. Richard Lobel was allowed to speak and said the approval is meaningful to the commission and pleaded with the board that it is important. I believe that this is undue influence that swayed the board and that the board did not have a robust knowledge base on zoning or land use. As was mentioned by Sean, we do not have a land use committee. And this is the first substantial zoning application in our downtown. Now, I'd also like to point out that multiple Community Board members reached out to me privately after the vote to let me know that they didn't feel that there was adequate preparation or support on this technical topic. I'm going to go into three quick things that I think has not been mentioned. One, community engagement. I'd like to state for the record that on engagement with our elected Rep. Councilmember Matthew Eugene, we have contacted him 300 times via phone, 250 times via email, and we have not received a response or a meeting. We've asked for a Zoom meeting. I'm sorry, we received a response from his Chief of Staff, but not a response for a meeting to be confirmed. We asked for a Zoom meeting, and we're only offered an in-person socially-distanced meeting. This is unsafe. We have disabled members, working parents, and high-risk members. I would be the only one of the core volunteer team of 10 that could even attend a meeting that is in person during the day. We've implored all of our time and free weekends to talk to mayoral candidates, the Public Advocates Office, local city council members, as well as Assemblywoman Radice Bishat. I implore you that, based on the discussion, you please, please, please make these community benefits binding. The developer has not acted in good faith since the beginning. He currently has over 35 violations on the building. He was recently issued a stop-work order. It is plastered on the front for illegal demolition work. Two more points, one on food access and then one on affordability. Can I keep going? I don't know what my time is. I'm going to keep going. Thank you. Yes? I'd like to underscore some earlier points that without the supermarket, this area would be a food desert. In fact, securing and maintaining the supermarket was one of the major reasons why the Community Board overwhelmingly voted for it. However, since that meeting, Tim-
I'm afraid that that is the time. And I would now invite Commissioner Gillows to ask a question.
Hi, Ms. Reinholdts, would you mind making your last two points about, you may have completed your point about food access, but on affordability?
Yeah, sure. The food access point was that, I believe, in my opinion, it was a bit misleading how the supermarket was kind of a linchpin argument that the Community Board overwhelmingly voted for, 21 to 5. However, since learning, I'm also in the 400 E17th Street, you know, directly behind. And Tim Sudwigs, our architect, chief architect in-house and Community Board, Co-op Board, excuse me, President, did let me know after the meeting that you can't actually keep a supermarket open if you're going to excavate for 44 parking spaces. It's actually technically not viable. So I think if that information was, you know, brought to light, it would have been a very different discussion. And that's why so many Community Board members did reach out to me, because they weren't aware of that. Lastly, on housing and affordability, I believe that the chosen MIH option one, which is not the deepest affordability option, but it's actually, my issue is that these affordable units are not affordable for the real AMI of this community. I believe they're a red herring, and they're being used as a bargaining chip to increase the FAR of the building. While option one is approximately 60% of AMI for a family of four, the unit mix presented does not actually mean that it'll be, you know, 40,000 to 60,000 in household income. What that actually means is you could hit 80,000 in AMI with affordability option one. I would ask that the unit mix be amended to 50% one bedrooms and the remainder mix of two and three bedrooms. These are recommendations based on conversations with the community. We have been petitioning the last three weekends, and we've spoken to over 500 residents. Lastly, since it was mentioned, I would just like to implore that the fresh zone be expanded or be implored. I didn't know about it, but we are not designated a fresh zone. So I would implore that you guys look at that. And thank you so, so, so much for letting me finish.
Commissioner Levin also has a question.
Yeah, well, actually, I'd just really like to thank you so, so, so much for bringing all of this background and detail to us. There's a lot of rich information in your testimony. I have a question about this image that you're showing us. Can you explain, is this the R7D, the maximum R7D massing or something else?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, but you said you would, so what shape should this building be? You said you were, and some of the, many of the comments have made it clear that you are not opposed to any new building. What shape building should be built here?
I don't know if I'm technically, I'm a small business owner. I'm an e-commerce person, and I'm a marketer. So I don't think I can comment on the shape.
Okay.
However, Tim Sudwigs and Kai Peterson, who spoke earlier, who are architects, may be able to speak on that.
Okay, well, yeah, I think we've heard some of that. I mean, obviously, it's a, you know, there's a push and pull here. If you, if a building is to include a supermarket and affordable housing and, you know, whatever other benefits get negotiated, that all costs money, and so you get the bigger building in order to pay for those benefits. I mean, that's fundamentally the dilemma we're grappling with here. But this image is a very helpful sort of signpost to what's at issue here. So thanks for bringing it.
And now Commissioner Dwyer.
Thank you. Now, I'm just going to clarify on your comments regarding the fresh. This is a fresh zone for economic benefits, but not for zoning benefits. So there is some fresh incentives in this area.
Well, thank you for that clarification. And thank you, Ms. Reinholdts, for your testimony.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henny Carroll.
Good morning. Thank you for hearing me today. Can you hear me just fine?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great, thank you. I'm opposing my opposition to 1620 Cortellou upzoning and development, and I echo all of my neighbors before me who have also spoken in opposition. I've lived in Dittmas for five years, and during this time, I've seen more and more unwanted development come to the neighborhood. But this would unquestionably be the most disruptive to the lives of my neighbors, commuters, and the employees of the businesses this development would shut down for upwards of two years while permanently changing the character of the neighborhood and the progress. On top of the short-term disruptions, the plan itself says the majority of the units being built are one-bedroom units, which will not meet the standard, that will not meet the neighborhood's needs. This is a diverse family neighborhood that needs truly affordable housing, not affordable housing in name only, which will only further the ongoing housing crisis. The nine-story building is more than two stories above the current zoning and will dwarf everything around it, permanently altering the street and opening the floodgates to more profit-driven upzonings that will push out neighbors and forever change this beloved and historic neighborhood. I would like to end by comparing this to the most recently finished development down the road at 1035 Cortellou Road. I don't know if you guys are familiar with that property, but it was under construction for several years and was nice for the whole time. And that it's finally finished. It's been probably filled at 60%, about 40% vacancies there. They focus, they also similarly focused on unaffordable one-bedrooms and studios and didn't listen to the needs of the neighbors. And now it's mostly vacant building with vacant retail space on the ground floor. We cannot make the same mistake and keep changing our neighborhood. This upzoning is vehemently opposed by the neighbors and cannot be allowed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carroll. The Commission. Thank you for taking the time, Mr. Carroll. Our next speaker is Hannah Pennington.
Hi, Commissioners, thank you for your time. I live in the neighborhood surrounding 1620 Cortellou Road. I frequent the local businesses there, including Cortellou Market, as it is the only affordable grocery store in the immediate area. I also speak in opposition to the rezoning of 1620 Cortellou Road. I'd like to briefly echo some of the concerns raised by my neighbors, including Ms. Metcalf, Ms. Lessie, and Ms. Esterman. The construction of the proposed building would cause a major disruption to the neighborhood as well as lasting harm. It's important to note that during the COVID-19 pandemic, economic conditions have worsened significantly for small business owners and for their employees. Going forward, with the proposed rezoning and associated construction at 1620 Cortellou would force approximately 100 employees at small businesses to lose their jobs and be displaced. This, of course, would not just affect each individual worker, but would also cause harm to their households and their families, which is particularly unacceptable during the pandemic. The nature of the plan, particularly that of the underground parking garage, guarantees that the grocery store would be forced to close for 18 months to two years. As stated previously, this grocery store is the only affordable supermarket in the neighborhood, and it is vital that community members be able to access affordable food nearby, particularly during the pandemic, in which it is not safe or possible for many, particularly the elderly, to use public transportation to travel to other destinations in order to take care of basic needs that should be provided for in the neighborhood. Additionally, the construction would generate noise and pollution that would disrupt the education of the children at nearby PS 139. Like the local business owners, the pandemic has already caused a major disruption to the education of these students. An ongoing disruption could cause lasting harm. I'm concerned that the plan has not adequately considered the impact on the school community, as well as the impact of the pollution associated with the construction. For these and other reasons, the rezoning is not in the interest of the community and would rather be to its detriment. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the Commission. Thank you, Ms. Pennington. Our next speaker is Olteer Villanau. Olteer Villanau?
Should be able to, he's unmuted. There we go.
Welcome.
Okay, great, thank you. So, yeah, I live nearby, I shop at the store, but I am in opposition. And I think the Board already raised an important thing, which is the discrepancy with the Community Board voting in favor of this, yet there being so much opposition. And I think a large problem with this is there's a lot of emotional arguments, because the owner is a long-term, upstanding member of the community, and everyone knows him, likes him, everyone likes the store. So, you know, it's uncomfortable to say no to something that, you know, someone who believes in. But the problem is, and you guys are in real estate, you know, people believe things, but circumstances change, but buildings stay there for 50, 100 years. And even this store, it used to be a Met, and then it got upgraded to a Key Food, so it was a little more high-end. And we don't know, you know, after a new building, it might become a food emporium, you know? So nothing is forever, but when you make a commitment like this to a new building, it has, you know, long-term impacts. There's also a lot of external impacts, especially in terms of affordable housing. By allowing this building, it puts real estate pressure on the rest of the Cortellou Strip for other developers to want the same exception. The other buildings there are older buildings that are almost entirely affordable housing. There's a firehouse there, it's a noisy street, and these are older buildings. So, you know, people don't want to live there and hear all that noise. Newer buildings have much more, you know, they're much more soundproof. And so I'm afraid with this building that it will cause displacement along the corridor. So it's not just a matter of this building, but what happens to the rest of the community. And so basically, I feel that this is an out-of-context building, and if people looked at it as a, you know, if they took away the personal arguments and looked at this objectively, the Community Board would not be in favor. But they know the person, they heard a lot of things. None of those things are legally binding commitments, as far as I can tell. So people feel good about this, but there's no guarantee any of these promises are going to come to light. And so I wish that this was just approved as an as-of-right project without any zoning changes. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you for testifying. Questions from the Commission. Again, thank you. Our next speaker is Serena Moi.
Hello.
Yes.
Hello?
You're welcome. Please testify.
Sorry, hi. I am also a parent from PS 139 as well. My family has been a part of this community since 1984. So we've been here through all the changes that has gone on. And I would like to agree with all my neighbors and also with my, the other parents from PS 139 as well about the changes to this building that's going to be put up. I do believe that our community has been humble, has been family-based and locally owned and built. And I think we should appreciate and keep it as that. That's all.
Thank you for testifying. Questions from the Commission. Thank you, Ms. Moi. Our next speaker is Elizabeth McCune.
Doesn't appear that Ms. McCune is in the room.
Okay, then we will move on to Eileen McGill.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Sorry, that's the standard, the standard opening for every person on any. Hi, thanks for letting me speak. I have lived in the neighborhood for 20 years. I have shopped at that Key Food for 20 years. I do not know Tony. He is not a part of our, the community that I live in, and he is not, he has not participated in anything that we've done, and I've been very active. I am the president of our Neighborhood Association, Beverly Square East Neighborhood Association, which is directly part of and will be impacted by this. Our neighborhood is one of the, not just the most diverse neighborhoods in New York, but one of the most diverse neighborhoods in the country. And families that are not economically secure cannot advocate for themselves. Many of them, sadly, have been illegally displaced during this time. This above-zone building is also being snuck through at this time. Cortellou Road is quickly going to become a high-rise corridor. The integrity and the sky of our outer borough shopping district will completely change forever. Once it is changed, you cannot return it back to the neighborhood that it was. We went through a rezoning in 2009. We do not need to go above the current R6A zoning. Zoning exists for a reason. If you look at skylines, you can see where things are supposed to be high and not. There's no reason to upzone Cortellou Road. I'm such an active part of this neighborhood. I know every single employee at Key Food. They do not know what's going on in this development. They've come to us, asking us what the future of their lives are. The butcher, the dry cleaner, and the deli on the block were in tears yesterday, discussing it, saying they don't know if they are going to survive this. Please stick to the R6A zoning for our neighborhood. I did attend the CB14 meeting. 29 people spoke out against this development. Two people spoke for it, and the Board voted it through, as Alana said earlier, with some conditions, but there seemed to be some confusion. Nobody wants this. We went to our Board, we've gone to our Assemblyperson. We keep going up the pipeline. We're asking you to hear us and give us, we're taxpayers. We live here. Please, please leave our sky alone. We want a six-story building. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGill. Questions from the Commission. Thank you. Since we are getting near the end of the speakers who have signed up, I wondered, Ryan, if you would want to repost on the screen the process for signing up and explain it orally for people who might be listening in and decided that they would like to testify.
Certainly. So if you wish to speak and plan to access the hearing online, please register online to the upcoming meetings page of the NYC Engage Portal. A link to join the hearing is on the landing page after you register. Please do not close the landing page without first clicking on the link. If you're accessing the hearing via phone and wish to speak, you must first register with the dial-in participant hotline at the numbers listed on the screen. The, if one of them is busy, please try another. The meeting ID is 618-237-7396. Press pound to skip the participant ID, and the password is the numeral 1.
Thank you. We'll now continue with testimony from Corwin G. Thank you. We'll now continue with testimony from Corwin Green.
Corwin should be able to unmute.
At the end, I'm going to go through all the names of folks who were registered but didn't speak, so we'll return then.
Sure.
Our next speaker is Alisa Kaplan.
Ms. Kaplan is not in the room.
Okay, Whitney Payne?
Good afternoon.
Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you for allowing me to speak. I just have been present for most of the meeting, and I am in agreement with all my neighbors and all the organizers and the detailed presentations that were made from the co-op board from 400 E17th Street. I've lived in the neighborhood for eighteen years. My concerns would have to also be around transportation, crowding, them being able to actually excavate to include those parking spaces that be needed. There are people that sleep in their cars. There are people that just decide that they have to be ticketed because there's no place to put the current vehicles that are in this neighborhood. So, including a larger building, I am against that, and I would be in agreement with Ms. Eileen McGill, who stated that if we're not opposed to any building, but we're opposed to anything above six stories, so I would be testifying and standing firmly in opposition to any upzoning or rezoning, you know, beyond what was done in 2009. So to leave it in the R6A is what I would be testifying in in agreement with, in opposition of any of the rezoning and upzoning. And with that, I thank you for giving me this time to testify. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Payne. Questions from the commission? And thank you, Ms. Beer. Our next speaker is Marie Nelson.
My apologies. I didn't realize I was going to have all these issues with the mute button.
Welcome.
For the sake of not repeating everything else that's already been said, I currently live on Cortelia Road. I'm actually two blocks away from the proposed development. I have currently, well, I currently reside with my mother because I cannot afford to get an apartment on my own. And you know, with these affordable housing, it's really, it's not affordable at all whatsoever. There's a new development that just came was built across the street. I think it's 1920 Cortelia Road and Ocean Avenue. I have applied for that building. And to be honest with you, I I'm not optimistic at all with me actually getting into the building because I cannot afford it. I do not have the income to be able to support myself and my children. And bringing this new building in, it does not sound like it's going to benefit anybody who is within my predicament, who has had to had other family members, live with other family members, or have roommates in order to come up with the rent. I have shopped at Key Food. It's actually beneficial. And it has really, it it has really been integral into this community. So I understand that there is there is the proposition of maybe doing it into phases. It would really affect myself and all the other community members if this supermarket is taken out completely. And also, I don't think anybody has mentioned the laundromat. Within a six-block radius, it is the only laundromat. Thank God, my building has a laundromat in the basement, but there are others who are not as fortunate as myself to live in a building that has a laundromat. There are older people who live within the neighborhood who can, you know, cannot travel to get to the laundromat. So I really do think, you know, think hard and don't just dismiss what we are saying, our concerns, because we have to deal with the lasting impact of bringing this development into this community. So that's all I have to say. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Dweck?
Yes, thank you for bringing up the laundromat. It was actually on my list, and I didn't bring it up earlier. So I'm sure the developer is still listening. Should the rezoning go through, whether it be R7D or R7A? I understand that during the construction process, that there's going to definitely be a need to relocate the laundromat, and I don't imagine them coming back. Should it go through, should the application go through? So will you commit to, and this is not for now, but if you can follow up in writing, I'm looking for the developer to commit to helping the laundromat relocate to somewhere within the neighborhood to serve the community this year. Thank you for your comments, man.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Our next speaker is Danessa Santana.
Danessa Santana is not in the room anymore.
Okay, at this point, what I will do is go through the names of folks who had signed up to speak, but may have been experiencing difficulties, and see if you could let me know, Ryan, if they are in the room. Shirley Alexis?
No, don't see.
Mason Tahrer?
We have Mason. Let's try her again. Yeah.
Hello? Hello? Sorry, apologies. I had issues on muting.
Great.
Um, yeah, thank you so much. I'm, I also live very close to the Key Foods. I'm actually around the block on Cortelia and E17. I have been a longtime resident of Dipmas Park as well, in Flatbush here. And have, and I don't want to repeat what a lot of people have already said, but have very similar concerns about this construction, especially that it's an application that was put in three years ago and is moving forward today, as if our situation continues to be the same. And things have changed very dramatically in the past year. And people are really, the neighborhood is struggling. A lot of small businesses are shutting down. People are really struggling to make a living. If this is about affordable housing, I live in a six-story building that has units that are vacant. We know that there are units that are vacant. We know that there are people who are struggling to pay rent. And really, I think the adding affordable housing argument does not really make very much sense. It's something that maybe has worked for developers and for real estate in the past few years as kind of like a Trojan horse to change and completely displace people in neighborhoods, but it just really does not make sense at this point. So this is something, I mean, in terms of accessing services, I will repeat again, as somebody who lives around the block from this project, this is a great disruption to just getting affordable groceries, getting my laundry done. I mean, these are day-to-day activities and needs that we have in the community that are being disrupted by this project, and it's just really, yeah, very confusing that something like this is moving forward with an approval process in times like these, when people are unable to participate, when people are unable to keep up and kind of, I mean, it's amazing that so many people have opposed this in this way. But just, yeah, I, again, speaking in opposition, this is an extreme disruption and kind of just hearing of the many people, I mean, a hundred layoffs on this block in a period where so many people are getting laid off. This is not something to take lightly. It might seem small or temporary, but really, we are in very different times. And I just, I just hope that this is something that is registered. And thank you.
Thank you for your testimony and for sticking with us through the technical difficulties. Appreciate it. Questions from the commission? Then thank you, Ms. Tahrer. Aaron Lutz-Kunoy?
No longer in the room.
Sarah Awwa?
Also no longer in the room. I don't, yeah.
Lauer Staugeitis?
No longer in the room.
Elizabeth McCune?
Not in the room.
Okay, Corwin Green?
Yes, we have Corwin here. Good try. Still not, like, we have, we've given them the ability to speak, but they're not unmuting their microphone. Might be further technical. We've reached out.
Okay, Elsa Kaplan?
Not in the room.
Danessa Santana?
Not in the room.
Okay, and with respect to Corwin Green, to the extent that you can hear us, I would just welcome your submission of any written testimony. And at this point, I would ask, Ryan, whether any additional folks have signed up to
I will resend you. We have more on the list. I'm sorry if you missed it.
In the interest of time, since I'm not receiving it, do you want to call out the next speaker?
Sure. The next speaker is Peter Honshark.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you all. My name is Peter Honshark. I'm a licensed social worker and a student of eco-psychology. I live half a block from the proposed site, and I've lived most of my sixty-two years in the neighborhood. I, I'm opposed to the imposition of a skyscraper onto Cortelia Road for all of the above-mentioned reasons mentioned by all the other people. I'm afraid of, I'm afraid the neighborhood will turn into what happened in Floho in Manhattan. It used to be such a pleasant neighborhood to walk around with low-lying shops and the wholesale greenery's, and now it's just a dark and gloomy canyon. And I think that could happen to Cortelia Road, again, for the reasons that so many people have given. In the past four years in our country, we've, we've lived under an encroaching ethos of breaking the rules and bending the rules and sidestepping the rules, especially the spirit of the rules, under a leadership that you might call the patron saint of ravenous development. And I would ask the commission to be a part of the solution to that and not a continuation of that kind of problem. To what everybody has said, I would just add, within the past three months, there were many ambulances gathered around the Cortelia Road subway station when somebody either fell or was pushed off the slim platform that we have. And I think that that has happened another two times in the past two years. I'm not sure, but it could easily happen. And other questions of density, you know, every rush hour, twice a day, and all day on truck day, as Key Food calls it. By the way, I'm known to the Key Food staff as Mr. No Salt, and the only thing I like better than Key Food and the idea of community-responsible, low-income housing being brought in is the physical character of the neighborhood, which would be compromised and then ruined, I think, if this proposal were to be, you know, the whole, the very word "upzoning" seems to me to be an Orwellian word, and I submit that. But there's plenty of snarled traffic. Sometimes it takes up to fifteen minutes to get from Coney Island Avenue, three blocks, to the Q Station if you're driving. I have, I have taken one to two hours to park. I've driven around the neighborhood one to two hours to park if I get home after seven or eight o'clock at night. And so the density problem would even contribute to global warming in all of that extra driving just to park. And I think that's all I have to contribute. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Questions from the commission? And thank you again. And our next speaker will be Joe Frame-Lagone.
Okay. Joe Frame-Lagone could unmute yourself, please. Should have the ability to do that.
Okay, then if we could move on to Mr. Gator?
Yes.
Yes, you appear to be muted.
I'm unmuted. Mr. Gator, can I speak?
Yes, please. Welcome.
Okay, hi. My name is Mr. Gator. I've been living around here since 1969. What's about ready to take place is about ready to destroy the whole fabric of family. This developer, whoever he is, all you guys that are sitting there don't live in the community. The borough president don't live in the community. None of you guys doing anything to stop what's taking place. It's not fair that moms and pops have to move out, the laundromats, the stores got to move out, and just keep it moving. He talking about replacing. You ain't gonna replace anything. The developer is strictly here for the money. All you guys are here is to fill your pocket. I am a union plumber. I did not hear one development state that they gonna have union labor to do the job. They don't use union labor for this type of work. They keep the money to the bosses, and everybody that gets down gonna get paid. You understand? That goes for everybody that's part of this. It's not fair. You understand? Take it somewhere else. You ain't trying to do nothing to help the community. You destroying the fabric of the community. What are we supposed to do? You understand? What is mom supposed to do? We talked about the laundromat. What you gotta walk, five blocks to go to the laundromat? You ain't gonna try to put no laundromat nowhere. Please. Anybody that's part of this, he unique to stop. It's not fair. You understand? That we have to look at developers, especially the borough president. He down with anything, you understand? Because he gonna get a piece of action, he gonna get his pocket filled, just like all the rest of you guys. It's not right. You understand? I've been around here long enough. I go to the train station, you understand? And it's bad enough that it's crowded now. Do you know what that's gonna do to the community? It gonna destroy the whole entire community, and now we have to worry about all the people that's coming in here. We ain't got no money to pay for these buildings, the partners that's gonna be there. Ain't nobody got no money for that. Yeah, you talking about low housing? I don't think so. You understand? It ain't no such thing as low housing. They gonna put it to a point where you can't even live in the area. I own a home out here. Like I said, sixty-nine. You understand? It's not fair. And all you people that's sitting there with greed, that's all y'all think about is fill your pocket and keep it moving. You ain't thinking about the community because you don't live in the community. You understand? And once you understand that, yeah, you will support the community because one day, it may happen to you. Thanks for letting me share.
Thank you. Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gator. Questions from the commission? Again, thank you, Mr. Gator. Harriet Hines? Ryan, could you check whether Harriet Hines is still in the room?
Uh, yes, Ms. Hines is in the room. We've, there we go.
I'm sorry, muting. Yes, my name is Ha- Yes, my name is Harriet Hines. I'm a resident in the community, homeowner for forty-three years and a community activist in this community. Um, I myself have been affected by predatory development where I live on Ocean Avenue and Cortelia Road. Um, developers came here and they developed right next door to me in the brownstone, a hundred and twenty-six years old. The result of the development is I, my home is in desperate need of repair. Um, and what I'm concerned about is that with this bu, the building of this magnitude going there at sixteen-twenty, all the homes that's in the area could be, you know, affected by this development, the vibration, the shaking of the foundations, ruining their property. And a lot of people around here can't afford to fix their properties, which is another thing that's gonna be driving homeowners out of here. Also digging underground for a forty-four, um, car parking lot is gonna bring a lot of rodents into the area. I myself have been subjected to this. Again, as I say, a development went on next door to me and across the street at the, uh, Ocean Avenue, Cortelia Road, at the former church, Baptist Church of the Redeemer. And as a result of that, we have been infested with rats, mice, roaches, and I could only expect the same is gonna happen, probably even greater, once they dig forty-four, you know, down, escalate for a forty-four, uh, foot parking lot. I don't think that, um, the people here are considering the quality of life uh, for the residents here in, uh, in, in this area. And also, um, I would like, I would like to seek, you know, further opportunities by running for office to try to, to try to like, uh, rid the predatory developers from developing over here. We're, we're down zoned. So since we're down zoned, we don't, we don't need M I H over here in this area. Affordable housing is not affordable housing. It is only housing for the rich. And I think that that's a deceptive title to the public to try to get permission to build up taller and wider. We need to preserve the culture here on Cortelia Road, preserve the culture of the neighborhood. And again, please consider this and vote no in opposition of the building at sixteen-twenty Cortelia Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hines. Questions from the commission? Again, thank you. And our next speaker will be K. Olen Madden.
Like Helen is no longer in the room.
Okay. Avi Glickstein.
Hi. Can you all hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Hi, thank you very much. Um, I'm a, a parent at, uh, one thirty-nine as well and on the student, uh, the school leadership team. And I've been a, um, a co-op owner and a homeowner, um, in the neighborhood since two thousand and ten. I just wanted to not take up too much time because I think people said it much better than I did earlier on. Um, but I wanted to amplify, uh, a couple of points. One being the level of need in our neighborhood. Um, you might look at Cortelia Road with the shops and bars and things and, and, and kind of not, a, a, and miss, misunderstand what the level of need is in our neighborhood. I mean, it's to the point that the, the New York Times Daily Bo, podcast did an entire episode on a food pantry on Foster Avenue and Coney Island Avenue that feeds, um, upwards of a thousand people every week now, people who are going there who never were, uh, food insecure before. Um, an organization called People in Need went out of, and, and a neighborhood restaurant called Jalsa, um, which has been running for a while, but is now seeing levels of need that it hasn't before. Feeding people, flat mutual aid groups that have formed because of the pandemic. We're all, you know, people are obviously everywhere having, um, a, a need. But just the idea that this would come now is, is just not what the neighborhood, uh, needs. Also, um, just wanted to say that, that the stuff about the community board meeting um, and the process there, that with that level of confusion, it's not just the level of expertise. It seems like, I mean, admittedly, I was not there, but just based on what, uh, was being said about Chairman Powell's misunderstanding of approval versus disapproval, um, uh, that, that, that's not a level of expertise a, as it pertains to land use. That's a level of expertise as it pertains to the process. And that is not a prob, uh, you know, with that level of, of confusion, how something, uh, a project of this nature could go forward, a project that's going to affect the neighborhood in a way that it's going to affect it, um, I, I don't understand how that's possible. So, um, and I would also say and reiterate that people are, and I included, I'm not recognize the need for, um, housing that is low income, not affordable necessarily, low income housing, but, um, that I'm, we're not opposed to the development, but the, the idea that this, uh, project is going to be upzoned when there's no need for a nine-story building, um, especially when, as was said by one of the members of the committee earlier, the upper levels seem to be bigger than they need to be. Um, maybe you should take that as a clue as to the, um, intent of the developer and the fact that they won't commit, um, in writing to any of the preconditions that you give them. So I would ask you to please, um, ask for any commitments to be put in writing um, and that they, that we hold them to them if this project does move forward, but that you keep it to six stories and under the current zoning. We don't need, um, further upzoning in the neighborhood, which might lead to further, uh, state development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Glickstein. Questions from the commission? Thank you. Our next speaker is Claire Rankin.
Uh, Claire Rankin is no longer in the, in the room.
Okay, um, those are the speakers that I have seen. Have any others come in?
I, I would ask that we go back to Jofrain, uh, Legonde. He's in the room and has signed up again.
Great.
Give it another try. There we go.
I'm here now.
Fantastic, welcome.
Thank you all so much for your patience. Um, so I am a resident of Dipmas Park, uh, Cortelia Road. I not only was born and raised in Dipmas Park and, um, grew up along the lanes of Cortelia Road where they're trying to redevelop. So I have seen from the late eighties on to today. I am raising my children in the neighborhood. They go to P S one thirty-nine. I am active and I, I love my neighborhood for the fact that we show up. And as you can see on this call and in the community board meetings and with, just with the pandemic, we unite and we come together to support our community. And we are parents. We are, uh, employees of, of, of some of these organizations and places that have had to furlough people. I'm, I'm part of the community, um, I am part of the Flatbush Development Corporation Board because of all of the, um, we tend to be ignored in terms of our need because we are thought to be such a prosperous neighborhood. But in reality, we are real estate rich. But people are, are, are cash deprived. People do not have the means or, or even the energy at this point to now have to find another location to get their groceries that they can afford. They don't have the energy to find another place to do laundry when they're trying to, uh, keep their kids educated while on a Zoom class and also managing their own careers. There is way too much going on in the world, in people's lives and in the neighborhood to even consider doing any type of rezoning to, to Cortelia Road. If this developer wants to come into the neighborhood, then they need to come in. They need to actually connect with the community, see what we need. See there that there's so many, uh, local businesses and people who have companies that maybe they can develop a multi-use building where the community, uh, uh, people who are entrepreneurs can come bring their business to this building. We definitely need a community center if they're gonna put this building there. We need a pool, we need activities, we need a place where, uh, uh, community-based organizations can meet. Uh, we need a social, a uniting place where, where we can come together and help the people that we're already helping, finding spaces to feed people, as you've heard. You know, these are parents and, and local community members who have come together to help ourselves. So as we are letting you know, as the community has let you know, oppose this rezoning because we don't need it, we don't want it, and we're not gonna stop. And if they are gonna come in, then they need to listen to our conditions. They need to meet with us so we can come to a common ground. Thank you for your time. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Legon, and thank you for sticking with us so that we were able to hear you. Appreciate that.
No problem.
The commission. Again, thank you. And Ryan, again, back to you to see if there are others.
So, uh, Claire Rankin has returned to the room.
Oh, great, Ms. Rankin.
I saw her.
Um, I just wanted to say that this doesn't seem right for our community. It doesn't, it doesn't, it just, it's, it's not right for our residents. It's not right for the community. It's, it's just that I don't want this, this, this building to be built because who would wanna live in such an expensive building? Like, who would want to live in such a so expensive building that they could, they just don't have to live in such as expensive building? We need cheaper buildings, not more expensive buildings. Thanks.
Thank you, Rankin. Questions from the commission? Thank you again. And Ryan, are there others who have been able to rejoin the room?
No, we don't have any further new speakers or any returned speakers.
Okay, well, with that, this hearing is closed. And Madam Secretary, is there any other business before the commission?
Uh, there is no further business and good afternoon, uh, Chair Lago and Commissioners, but we do have one housekeeping item I'd like to, uh, read, if I may.
Please.
Okay, for those of you who are unable or did not wish to testify, you can submit written testimony online by selecting this hearing on the upcoming meetings page of the N Y C Engage portal through D C P's webpage or by mailing your comment to City Planning Commission Counter Information Office, one twenty Broadway, thirty-first floor, New York, New York, one zero two seven one.
Thank you for that. And, um, I will now end by noting that, um, we are in the midst of an extended holiday season. The holiday of Diwali was celebrated in November. We are in the midst of Hanukkah. Uh, coming up, we have Christmas, Kwanzaa, New Year. Um, and while these holidays are certain to be different from any that we've experienced, I hope that all of the commissioners, all on this call are able to take what joy that we can from being with our families and friends, even if only virtually. And with that, we'll close this meeting.
Thank you, Chair Lago.
Happy holidays.
Bye, guys.
Bye-bye.
Be well.